I think Mark and I are gonna have a long day when I get back.
Since our atomic clock doesn't appear to be working back there up on the high wall, we're going by my iPhone, which is 6:01, so we'll call this meeting to order at the Denison City Council for Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025, in beautiful downtown Denison. And it's our pleasure to have Jacob Nichols, pastor of St. Luke's Episcopal. If you'd please come forward and give us our invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Denison the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And bless the families and residents of the city of Denison through Christ our Lord. Amen.
And Amanda Parsons, Parks and Recreation Director, will give us, or lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge allegiance to the One State under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We've got a nice crowd, and we've got an exciting menu for you tonight. And first of all, I would like to start with item number two on the agenda. First of all, welcome to Josh Massey. He's one of our city councilmen. He's joining us remotely. He's in Canada, I believe, right now, so we're glad to have him. So that gives us six total. And Pastor Thorne, who's one of our other council members, is recovering from surgery, and he couldn't be here tonight. So, on behalf of the Denison City Council and staff, we welcome you here tonight, not only to celebrate the completion of a monumental community task, but also to honor those who made this achievement possible. Denison has a highly visible structure that's been part of its skyline for decades, the Denison Silo, affectionately known by many of us as Rosie. And she's been worn down by Father Time and just not quite as pretty as she once was. She added nothing to the beauty of our great city, and specifically to our beautiful Gamsa award-winning downtown. Councilman Michael Courtright had a vision that something wonderful could be done with the silo, of which we could all be proud. And one day, while visiting with Tony Kai, he said casually, "Why don't we put a mural on the silo?" Inspired by that conversation, the Denison Development Foundation created a task force from a cross-section of our community that rolled up their sleeves and got to work. The task force was chaired by D.C. Ramsey, and the group included Stanley Morrison, Dr. Michael Courtright, Gracie Guest, Zach Deuce, Donna Dow, Brian Hender, Tiffany Barney Harrells, Tony Kai, and Admiral Bill Ritz. After months of preparation, planning, and getting the artwork done just right, the Silo Mutual Task Force, Silo Mural Task Force, spent months raising funds necessary for its completion. The project was totally funded by private foundations and individuals. I repeat, the project was totally funded by the private sector, not the city. The last step in this project was to obtain bids from the contractors and to finalize the budget and start the process of installing the new mural. The timing had to be just right, and retired Admiral Bill Ritz took on this task as the master planner to coordinate the various steps by being on-site daily, working with the artists and the contractors, and overseeing every single detail of the installation, and his plan worked perfectly. The Battle of the Axe is now memorialized on a monument of huge proportions, so the game can be recognized and honored by all who visit downtown Denison. This monumental task wasn't completed all at once. It was the result of careful and thoughtful planning and a passion to enhance our community and support our Denison and its independent school district. So today, on behalf of everyone here, we want to say thank you, Chairwoman D.C. Ramsey, and to all the members of the Silo Task Force for your leadership, your vision, your hard work, and commitment to excellence. It's because of you all we have a spectacular work of art for all to see and enjoy for many years to come. In closing, we have one more item to discuss. In this brief project recap, I did mention Rear Admiral Bill Ritz and his leadership on this project. He deserves more than just a mention, and to that end, I'm going to invite Admiral and Mrs. Ritz to come join me at the podium, so that I might read a proclamation honoring Bill for his many years of public service, not only to our country, but also to our community. Admiral Ritz and Julia, I invite you to meet me up front. So you can face our friends, our many friends in this audience, and many Yellow Jacket fans. So Admiral Ritz and Julia, we're so glad to have you tonight, and I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of the city of Denison. Whereas during the decades of service to our country while in the United States Navy, Rear Admiral William A. Ritz obtained numerous awards, including the Distinguished Service Medal, Defense Superior Medal, Legion of Merit with three gold stars, a Bronze Star with a combat V, a Purple Heart, Meritorious Service Medal with a gold star, a Navy Commendation Medal, Combat Action Ribbon, Presidential Unit Citation, Meritorious Unit Commendation, and various other campaign and service awards. Whereas upon his arrival in Denison, he organized and served as the chairman of the Texoma Technical Enterprise Council, and was volunteer economic developer for seven years at the North Texas Regional Airport, served on the Grayson County Foundation Board, and also on St. Luke's Church Board. And whereas Rear Admiral Ritz has served on the board of the Denison Development Foundation for the past 20 years, as a board member, as the chairman, and now a senior member, in these capacities, he has been engaged in communities and task forces to complete community projects, such as leading a task force that published a master planning document with specific details on every building in Denison's Main Street. And whereas Rear Admiral Ritz recently spent weeks meeting with contractors, analyzing the bids, sometimes that's hard, and developing the final budget and managing every aspect of the successful installation of the Battle of the Axe mural on the Denison silos just across from Munson Stadium. And whereas Rear Admiral Bill Ritz has been an asset to our country and every community in which he has been a part of, with his extensive knowledge in organizational and management skills, and his commitment to complete projects, and his high moral character, integrity, sophistication, and good humor. And whereas his wife Julia, through the years of service, was quite the strength behind a life of duty and honor. We salute her devotion, resilience, and love that carried them both through their life service. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of the city of Denison, do hereby proudly recognize and honor Rear Admiral William A. Ritz as the recipient of the Moving Forward, Giving Back Award, and who has dedicated his life to serving our nation with honor, courage, and commitment, and who continues to exemplify the spirit of service by actively contributing his time, talents, and wisdom to the civic, educational, and community initiatives, embodying the very sense of giving back. So Admiral Ritz, Julia, I'm gonna ask you to hold this. I'll take my stick. I'd like to present this to Admiral Ritz, awarded to Rear Admiral William A. Ritz, United States Navy, retired, 2025, moving forward and giving back. Congratulations, Admiral. All right. I jumped into this, y'all have a seat. I jumped into this without having a chance to show our video. Would you please enjoy this for just a moment? Then the Admiral wants to speak, so we're gonna have you out of here by 10:00 or 10:30 at the latest.
First of all, thank you. I am bowled over and totally surprised. For those of you that knew about this, it did not include me. But there's three things that, you know, the catalyst for this is that mural that you can just see out of that window if you look carefully. And there's a couple of things about that that I'd like to say. First of all, it was not me. It was Tony Kai sitting in the back there, and his drive and spirit and enthusiasm for this project from the day that Michael mentioned it, to the fact that everybody got involved, and the help of Farrah and Tiffany from his office, and everybody that contributed to that, certainly wasn't me. Yeah, I pulled together some things at the end, but that's just the way it goes. The second thing, and perhaps to my mind the most important, and it kind of goes with this, is you know, that mural symbolizes Denison football, but it's not just Denison football in my mind, it's Denison. It shows the past and what we've done, shows the present, although I'm happy to say that tonight, and what we have, and the future of what it's gonna be. It shows the people of Denison, bringing up our youth, instilling with them the principles of honor and commitment and loyalty, and just what we all stand for in this city and this state and this great country. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and in my mind, that's what that mural stands for. And then third and last, despite all that, I want to say, how about them jackets?
Admiral, did you get up and that? RC is the gentleman who's done most of our murals in beautiful downtown. It was a fantastic job. Amazing how he does this. Here we go. Spray cans in hand. 408 spray cans in hand.
Not counting partials.
Not counting the partials, okay. Can you show you? Bill took that last picture, I'm pretty sure. Looking better? And better? And it says 27, 73 pictures. Got a few extra pictures for next year.
If you've driven through downtown Denison, you've probably noticed a fresh paint on the silo, painted by Ryan Thorpe, passing details on the project.
Denison football fans will have a brand-new view this upcoming football season. The Paint the Silo project is officially complete. The Battle of the Axe is the longest-running high school football rivalry in Texas. Dating back to 1901, the annual football game between Sherman and Denison brings out the hometown pride in each city. The mural depicts an older Yellow Jacket passing the axe to a killer bee, a member of Denison's youth sports program. Tony Kai, the president of the Denison Development Alliance, says he wants the mural to capture the weight that football holds in the city, and the friendly rivalry that comes with it.
We had a lot of fun teasing each other about it, but every fall, every late summer now, when we play the game, the communities come together, and we just have a good time. It's a wonderful sporting event.
Ryan Christensen, the artist of the mural who goes by RC, says the mural took nine days to complete and was done entirely with rattle-can spray paint. Tonight at 10, hear from the chair of the project to learn how the silo went from a blank canvas to a hometown masterpiece. In Denison, Texas, Ryan Thorpe, K-10 News.
If you've driven...
All right, we're gonna run the video. It's here. Just one more thing. If you'll pardon me for just a moment. I'm surprised they let me borrow this TV from the station.
Perfectly on cue, win over Sherman this past Friday night in Sherman, we now have the axe back. So would anyone who was involved, or anybody who wants to come up here and be part of this picture, we'd love for you to come up, and we'll take a picture with Admiral Ritz. Yeah, we're gonna move. We have, conveniently have Chief Gudgel in the back to help keep an eye on this. Do you have to take it now? Okay. So we're gonna keep this. If anybody wants to come up and get your own picture with it, we're gonna keep it, or just a little bit. So have much fun, y'all. If you haven't been by, the mural is absolutely beautiful. It shows up very nicely. In the evenings, we just made a drive-by Friday night, as a matter of fact, to enjoy the mural. It's nicely lit and enjoyable for all the community. So the next item, we have a proclamation for tourism-friendly community proclamation. So if you'd come up, here, Ms. Jordan, and Ms. Emily. And Ms. Ashley, welcome. Ashley and I have become pretty good friends because my wife grew up in Amarillo, as did Ashley, grew up on the same street as my wife grew up. So we've, we're getting to be good friends, especially when our grandkids are in town, we get to buy everything, so. Whereas, this is a proclamation, whereas the city of Denison is a vibrant and welcoming community that embraces its rich history, cultural heritage, scenic beauty, and friendly atmosphere. And whereas Denison is home to numerous attractions, including historic downtown Denison, the birthplace of Dwight D. Eisenhower, the beautiful shores of Lake Texoma, vibrant arts and music events, unique shopping and award-winning wineries and breweries. And whereas the city of Denison actively promotes tourism through partnerships with local businesses, community organizations, and regional partners, working collaboratively to create memorable experiences for visitors from across Texas and beyond. Whereas the city understands that tourism is not only an important driver of economic development, but also a means of strengthening community pride and celebrating what makes Denison unique. And whereas Denison continues to invest in infrastructure, marketing, and hospitality initiatives to ensure that all who visit feel welcomed, appreciated, and inspired to return. And whereas Denison proudly recognizes its ongoing commitment to hospitality, service, and promotion of all the city has to offer. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of the city of Denison, do hereby recognize and proclaim the city of Denison as a tourism-friendly city. Thank you, ladies, for all you do. Congratulations. And we have one more recognition this evening, and it's an honor to present this year's Building Officials Association of Texas official award of the year to Kirk Kern. Kirk, would you join us up here? Kirk was selected for his positive influence, staff support, kindness, and his ability to foster an environment of open communication and continuous learning. Throughout his career as a building official, Kirk has been a model of integrity and dedication. He has consistently gone above and beyond to ensure the building codes are applied with fairness, expertise, and a strong focus on protecting the health and safety of all the public. His approach balances technical experience with practical solutions, always keeping the needs of the community at the forefront. The Building Officials Association of Texas and its executive board are proud to honor Kirk Kern from the city of Denison, Texas, as the 2025 Building Official of the Year for his outstanding contribution and leadership in the field of building safety. So please join me in congratulating this year's official recipient, Mr. Kirk Kern. Okay, thank you, everyone. And now we get back to the agenda. Item number three, the public comments. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below, if any, will be heard at the specific, as the specific hearing starts. We have one card tonight, and it will be on an item later in the agenda, so we'll hold that, and we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda, we will withhold item D and do it separately, so the consent agenda consists of item A, B, C, and E. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item D. Second.
Councilman Redwine makes the motion, a second by Councilman Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I forgot about you, Josh, sorry about that. Now we move to item D of the consent agenda, and we're here to receive a report, hold discussion, take action on a turnkey restroom construction facility to be constructed at Munson Park. Ms. Amanda, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The current staff report and agenda item reflect a price that does not include required bonds for the project, so we're just requesting that any motion that is presented tonight reflect the increased price. So the price in your motion would reflect $190,265.
$190,265.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. And that includes the bonding for the contractor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussions, discussion or questions from council?
Can you give us a little information on the restrooms themselves, I guess, the square footage, how many toilets, male, female, just kind of just some dimensions possibly? Just wondering.
I don't think I have the dimensions in here. I can tell you it's gonna be a two unisex restroom, custom build, so we will select material, color, et cetera. It'll have a five-foot front porch with other amenities included to it, and it'll have a chaseway for storage. It'll be conveniently located centrally to the park where existing parking is accessible, so that it services all areas of the park versus the current restrooms that are on the very further northern end. And if you give me a little time, I can pull up the footprint, I'd be happy to provide the footage for you.
HVAC included?
It has all utilities except for that, so it'll have water and electric, all turnkey as part of the project, but not HVAC.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve item D?
Mayor, I move to approve a custom turnkey restroom construction and installation agreement at Munson Park, contract number 2025-0095, with Restroom Facilities Limited, LTD, and an amount not to exceed $190,265, and authorize it on the city manager to execute the same, subject to final legal review and approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Courtright. Any other discussion, comments, questions?
Just to make sure I heard correctly, Councilmember Thomas requested information that has not been presented to him so far. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, would you mind coming back up? We'll get that information now. Ms. Parsons is back.
So the concrete slab will be 274 square feet, and then the floor plan itself is 243 square feet. It'll be approximately a 21-by-15-foot roof with a 20-foot-by-13.7 slab building.
Is this a cinder block building, or what's the construction of it?
So it's, it is consistent with your, it'll be connected to the sewer facility, so it's not like a compost or a drop unit facility, but it'll be built similar to like what you see at THF.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Josh.
So just wanted to make sure I'm doing my math right. That's about $850 a square foot to build four bathrooms with a shingle roof on it. Is there something I'm missing as far as why the cost should be so high? Do they have to run sewer for a half a mile or something? Or is that included in their price?
We did have to run infrastructure, so we had to include a lift station that was currently not there and run material to the lift station. The contract price, though, is for them to build it, bring it in, build the slab, connect all of the utilities. It provides a warranty for it. It is a by-board contract, so.
So are, the city provides up to the facility of all the utilities necessary, and then they connect to it on-site?
Within 75 feet, yes.
Okay, and so we're still at, I haven't got a calculator handy with my iPad. It looks like something like $800 a square foot. Um, it looks like something like $800 a square foot?
I haven't done those calculations, but I can.
So we're talking about 200-square-foot building for almost $200,000?
Yes, sir.
Does that sound about right there, buddy? Okay. Yeah, I've been driving through California and Oregon, looking at beautiful waterfront property in Montana, and I have yet to find something that costs for a full-size building with the land below it being purchased by the buyer for $1,000 a square foot. So that number seemed a little off to me. Um, I did not see the breakdown in the, uh, uh, agenda packet. So I would, personally, I would move to table the con, the discussion until such time as we've got information breaking down why that's so expensive.
And I'd second that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to table item D from the consent agenda. Any, any other discussion? If not, all in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All opposed, same sign.
Sorry, Mayor, could we have that motion included a date certain?
Yes, uh, table, we'd like to table this item until Monday, September the 15th at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Is that agreeable, Josh?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's a date certain and a time. Any other discussion? If not, is there, uh, all in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, and we'll table that item to the next meeting. And now we move to agenda item number five, the public hearings. And welcome Diane York for item A, which talks about a conditional use permit, um, in, on approximately 8.109 acres, uh, in the William Crowther survey. Ms. York, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the first item I have for you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit, um, on approximately eight acres, uh, for a property located within the Union Pacific Railroad, uh, or rail yard, uh, to allow for the operation of a truck transloading under the use of Railroad Team Track, Freight Depot, and docks. Uh, the applicant is, uh, Cement Co. USA LLC. Uh, the Cement Co. operation consists of transloading cement from railroad cars to trucks by way of fully enclosed, uh, truck trailer container utilizing a direct rail-to-truck unloading pneumatic sealed device. And per the applicant, uh, this type of transloading does not create dust, and the trucks will enter the Union Pacific Rail Yard by way of the access road, uh, located under US Highway 75, which is currently being, uh, constructed by a separate Union Pacific Rail, Rail Yard tenant. Uh, the applicant is prohibited from utilizing any existing residential rataways to enter the rail yard. Uh, the specific site, which is kind of hard to see from this screen, but just so you have an understanding, that's the far northern end of the rail yard. Um, you can, I don't know if you can see Helen Drive there, and then that pad, the concrete pad that you see, that's Reese Foods. Um, so that is actually where they will be located, and they will operate, um, within the existing hours of operation will be consistent with the, uh, those currently utilized by the rail yard, which is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm in discussion with the applicant. As I mentioned, utilizing that pneumatic sealed, uh, device for unloading the product from the railroad cars, um, onto trucks prevents the creation of dust. Because of this, the applicant is not connecting to city water, uh, for dust mitigation. However, staff is asking that abatement of dust be listed as a condition for this conditional use permit in order to provide city staff with the authority to require additional dust mitigation measures if, uh, dust is created and it's necessary to add that. Um, the future land use plan does designate, does designate this area to be developed in a mixed commercial, uh, manner, and the proposed CUP does comply with the future land use plan. There are a couple of conditions, uh, within the recommended motion that if council deems them necessary, I do ask that you include them within your motion. Uh, those do include, as I mentioned, uh, if necessary, additional mitigation for dust by way of city utilities, as well as the utilization of the access road under US Highway 75 as the sole access for Union Pacific Rail Yard. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request with those conditions, as did the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting held on August 26th. Thank you. Uh, I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant, as well as the property owner.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have Mr. Brian Cotter here tonight from, uh, Arlington, Texas. Uh, if you'd come up, uh, and give us your name and address, please, for the record, and then, uh, give us some background, please. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Brian Cotter with Paco Southwest Realty. Our office is, uh, 1703 North Paco Drive, Arlington, Texas, 76001. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the council, city staff, and citizens. Um, here this evening representing our client, uh, Cement Co. for a conditional use permit, uh, for their lease property within the UPR own site. Our location, uh, is about 1,100 feet north of the north right-of-way line of Ray Drive. We're north of the recently approved DeLisi case that you all approved. Um, so we are well, well away from the homes. Uh, our goal, as well as city staff and working with them, is that we will have zero impact on the homes. Uh, we'll be north of DeLisi, adjacent to the railroad. Uh, because it's cement, it, it can't be exposed to elements. So it's a pneumatic pump out of the rail car into a sealed truck. Uh, so there's a rubber boot on each end. If it leaked at all, and it was raining, we'd have a mess that people could not clean up. So it's a very, very clean operation. Uh, so, uh, all of our truck traffic will go along the, uh, southern edge of the railroad line, all the way to the, uh, right-of-way of 75. Uh, we'll go under 75 and tie in to the, uh, service road on the west side of 75. If you go out there now, you'll see that, uh, uh, all the, uh, traffic control devices are up, the curve's been saw cut, uh, the silt fencing is up, and there's a bulldozer out there clearing brush today. So, uh, that is moving along well with text on the permits in hand, and they are working. Um, so there's no problem with that being complete before the 180 days, should you all approve our, uh, CUP for us to complete everything. So, uh, no truck traffic will go to Ray, Juanita, or any city street. All the truck traffic will, uh, come and go from 75. That's very important. We're going to have portable restroom facilities. Uh, ours is a truck loading, um, and driving-off facility. So should the truck drivers need, uh, to use the facilities, we will have them there, and they will be, uh, cleaned and properly operated. What else? Uh, we're going to improve, uh, the existing lighting by replacing, uh, old fixtures that are out there for safety, uh, in the area of the loading and unloading, uh, operations. Uh, this proposed use will provide one of the vital raw materials needed to feed the positive growth and development of the greater Dennison area that, uh, we're now experiencing by providing cement for the new roadways, homes, and businesses. The other element of concrete was what you all have already approved with the DeLisi, uh, CUP. So now those raw materials that make concrete will be coming into Dennison should, uh, you all approve our case. Um, and I respectfully request your approval of this CUP case, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Okay. Thank you. If you could stay there just a moment. Uh, this is a public hearing, and the hearing is now open for anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against, uh, this item. And, uh, council, I'll ask if you have any questions, uh, of Mr. Cotter. Anyone have a question?
Can you give us a little more information on, I guess, the process? Is the Elise's company that, uh, we approved, um, a few months ago, is, is this a, a, a company that you guys work with in order to make your product, or?
It's a separate company that provides one of the raw materials for, uh, concrete.
Okay.
So we're the other half of the equation. Two separate companies leasing two sites adjacent to each other within the Union Pacific Railroad property. Um, and because it's a lease, it's a conditional use permit rather than a, as, uh, a PD or something of that nature.
Would you consider that company a competitor, or somebody just does something completely different as an aggregate company?
They're not a competitor. They're like a, a friendly, uh, a group that provides something that you provide to make a customer have a product to be able to sell. So for, uh, a concrete batch plant to sell concrete, they need product from DeLisi, and they need product from Cement Co. as well.
Got you.
All right.
Josh has a question.
Josh?
So I, uh, I've owned a batch plant and, uh, concrete delivery service in a past life, so I'm not afraid of the product you're bringing in. My concern is your delivery route, which is something that is pushed, uh, in the narrative pretty strongly, is dependent on the location of those batch plants. As we see growth happening in our northwest, uh, do you see your route structure taking a northbound on 75 to supply those? I realize that is a hypothetical, but it is coming our way, given that we're putting a hundred million dollars of infrastructure up there. And the second follow-up question would be if the, uh, it's the same thing I brought up to the aggregate company, if the state, uh, decides that they're going to increase the total, um, poundage that you can carry, or tonnage you can carry on tractor-trailer, uh, I'd want to make sure that the route structure to those new batch plants is unencumbered, or you may find that future city councils are resistant to the placement of those necessary building material locations within, uh, the delivery radius that the, uh, that the perishable product of concrete will withstand. So two questions for you is, one, uh, do you see northwest as an eventual route structure such that you may have to cross onto city streets? And second, uh, I'm assuming you guys are in the business of not owning the trucks, but le, uh, selling to, uh, owners who bring their trucks to you for delivery as third-party. Uh, do you see the increase in those weights compromising that potential route structure for bridges and things that are currently in our inventory?
Councilman, that's a question that I really don't have the expertise. Could I get our client to come up here to answer that, sir?
Sure. Yes. Welcome, sir. And if you'd, please give your name and address for the record.
Gary Humphreys, 3821 Collinwood, Fort Worth, Texas, 76107.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, to answer your question, sir, we're limited going north. Um, we can't cross the state line, cause Oklahoma won't accept out-of-state cement. So most of ours will either go south or east. As far as the trucking is concerned, again, we don't own the trucks. It's provided by the batch plant customers, who will be our primary source of sales. And, uh, we rely on them to follow text, uh, rules and regulations.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anything else?
All right, any, anyone else have questions? All right, sir, thank you very much for your information. I think we're, we're good. Thank you. All right, thank you, both of you gentlemen, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of or against the proposed, uh, item agenda? If not, the public hearing is closed. Back to council, any questions or comments? Josh?
No, sir, I've, uh, I got what I needed.
All right, thank you. So, um, is there a motion for item A under public hearings for the CUP?
What was the request to add at the access road only?
No, ma'am, it should be included.
Oh, it's already included, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I move to approve an ordinance for a conditional use permit allowing for the use Railroad Team Track, Freight, Freight Depot, and docks for the operation of a truck transloading operation with the following conditions. Acquisition and compliance with all required state and local permits. If created, mitigation of dust by way of city utilities, utilization of the access road located under US 75 as a sole access to the Union Pacific Rail Yard property.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Mayor Protem Adams, a second, uh, by Councilman Thomas. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Item B, receive a report, hold discussion, and public hearing on an ordinance to rezone 250 acres plus or minus, formerly known as the JM property north of Dennison on Highway 75. Ms. York, welcome back.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the applicant Dennison Development Alliance is requesting to rezone an approximately 250-acre, uh, tract of land, formerly the, uh, John, Johns Mansfield industrial site, from the light industrial district within the highway-oriented and overlay district to a planned development, excuse me, retaining the base zoning of light industrial and within the highway-oriented and corridor overlay district to allow for a, uh, industrial business park. This is an aerial view of that subject property. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it, just in case you're not. Um, that's 75 to the east. Uh, it is the intent of this planned development to create standards that allow for the development of a light industrial business park, as depicted in, uh, the concept plan that is attached within the agenda. Um, at this time, staff is not aware of an end user for the site. However, the PD or the planned development allows for multiple uses, such as, but not limited to, warehouse storage facilities, self-storage facilities, data centers, and window and door framing manufacturing. Um, the applicant has per, uh, proposed deviations from both the base zoning district and the overlay district, as well as establishing development standards specific to this project. Um, the planned development, uh, district development standards does detail all the requests of deviations and development standards. I mean, that is a part of the backup as well within this agenda. Some of those include, um, allowing for additional open storage, um, allow, or requiring the creation of a hike and bike trail through the property, which is compliant with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Um, these are a couple of, as well as, uh, some building materials, I'm sorry. These are a couple of the facade examples for those building materials. Um, upon zoning approval, uh, additional applications will be required prior to the development of the property. And these applications include, but are not limited to preliminary plat, site plans, civil engineering plans, and final plats. And the project is, or the property, excuse me, is subject to impact fees. Uh, the future land use plan does, does designate this area to be developed in a mixed commercial manner. And per the comprehensive plan, uh, mixed commercial areas should be developed as business parks, offices, manufacturing, distribution centers, industrial or mixed uses. Allowing for the development of this, uh, logistics park as a planned development complies with the future land use plan and its designation, uh, within the comprehensive plan. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, did recommend approval of the request at their meeting held on August 26th, uh, with the additional, um, with asking or asking the council to consider adding an additional standard that is found within the highway overlay ordinance. Um, it pertains to, uh, utilities, specifically underground utilities, and that language is called out for you on your screen. Um, but the section, I have only included it within the, um, recommendation, so that you don't have to read all of those words. But that section is specific to the language within the highway overlay ordinance. Uh, staff also recommends approval of the requests, and I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
All right, thank you. Questions of Ms. York from council? All right. This, uh, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against the proposed, um, item B under public hearings? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, back to the council. Any other questions, comments for council? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning the subject property to a planned development overlay district with the base zoning of light industrial and within the highway-oriented and corridor overlay district.
A second. Have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion or comments? Welcome back.
Hi. Uh, that does not include the commission's recommendation, so is that something that you're wishing to exclude, or do you wish to include that?
We can include it. What verbiage do we need to put in there?
It should be in the staff report.
Okay.
I don't think I had that in front of me.
See, recommended, most. That's what I got. I read that one, yeah. What do we miss?
So if it's not, I apologize. Um, probably if you could include that section, do you see those, um?
Section 28, that 46 dot?
Yes, sir.
Six. I need to read that whole thing?
Would you like to borrow my staff report? If you just want to use the section?
Okay.
Is that correct, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. And, do I need to read the whole thing over, or just read that just section part? All right. Include the section 28.46.6 dot E dot 2 dot D as a included recommendation.
So, are you amending your motion to include that item before it's on the screen, those seven or eight different lines?
Yes, sir.
All right. And the second was by Councilman Redwine, is that, will you accept that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion amended and seconded, is there any other discussion by council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Short. Now, item number six, items for individual consideration. I'm going to take these out of order on your agenda, and what I'd like to start with is a project update 7A, Ms. Alcibal, if you could help us get started on that, and then after that, Mr. Kye, I'll let you go second.
Sorry, is that the budget update? I thought we were going to do DDA first, so let me swap gears.
Well, we can do DDA first. Why don't we just let Mr. Kye go first? Mr. Kye, welcome aboard, you're up. All right, here we are, for the Dennison Development Alliance, Mr. Kye's going to present the 2026 budget, is that what we're doing?
Yes. And I'd like to say, yeah, Dennison Development Alliance, it's classified as a component unit of the city of Dennison, since they are funded primarily through sales tax. As a component unit, their financials, our finances are reported as part of our primary government in our annual audit, thus requiring council to approve their budget. So, DDA is present to present their budget for council's approval.
I see strong representation tonight from the Dennison Development Alliance. Welcome, two ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Kye?
Thank you, mayor, council. I had to wait for her introduction. She does such a good job, I don't want to miss that. You have the budget that we have presented to you. Every line item has a detailed explanation of what that money is going to be used for. We've outlined last year's budget and compared it to the proposed budget for this year, or this coming year, and on the right are the differences, pro or con, up or down, not pro or con, of those items. And so, I'm here on behalf of the board of directors, making this presentation. Just wanted to say that, just a quick summary of some great things that have happened this year. We've been really focused on the foundation industrial park, we've sold all that property. We have a 60,000 square foot building under construction as we speak for J and L Wire. Then we have two 80,000 square foot buildings that should be started sometime late fall, early spring, and we're installing a 12-inch waterline that you approved the last board meeting, for loop, for fire safety. Second to that, we did acquire the Chase Building, former Chase Bank dropped the building, and constructed new offices for DDA. And in that acquisition, that was approved by the council, we also picked up about 50 parking places that have been really handy during our reconstruction of Main Street. And then lastly, the facade program that we've been doing for the last 20-plus years, we finished the last two buildings, had a metal facade on them in the 200 block, I think that's the 95th facade program, or facade project that we've completed, not just us, but the building owners and everyone that's involved in that. So, we're pretty happy about that, and that was a key part of the Main Street America Award that we all worked together to win. So, moving forward, I'll answer any questions, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, I'll just hit a couple of items. Under administrative expenses, we have the DDA Summit Regional Conference. We're working with the two mayors from Sherman and Dennison and the Sedco staff. There's a vision that we put together a joint conference, so we had a meeting on that, did a coin flip, and Sherman's going to host the first one. We haven't really worked out who's paying for what yet, but, so I'll just put 10 grand in there in case some kind of a cost share. The vision there is that we want to bring the two communities together, and the leaders of the communities together, and the citizens together to look at this community, these two communities as one economic engine, and let's work together. So, we may or may not spend that. The office building maintenance, we've got 8,000 more in there, we don't think there's going to be any office maintenance, but since we own the building now, we don't, the landlord's always taking care of our old office, so we just kind of picked a number, put in there. But just below that's $18,000 saving, because we know we'll no longer lease an office, because we own it. Under salaries, I have one, that's a $5,000 raise, which is about a 5% raise for Tiffany Barney, the VP of Economic Development. Moving on down, program expenses, we have a workforce development, we've added about 9,000 to that. We do pay for the scholarships for the students that are in AMP, and the new program that we just funded this past year in cooperation with the Workforce Solutions Techs Homa, $225,000 EET Electronic Engineering Tech Lab that we now have at our high school. Park maintenance, we've added about 7,000 there, the 8475 property is actually getting kind of grown up, we have a tenant out there that keeps it fairly well mowed, but we're getting a lot of stuff out there where they probably need to mow and remove some brush. EDA, we had this in our budget for last year, because we thought we would apply for it, but there was administration at the DC level that kind of shut down a lot of the funding programs, so we did not apply for that. We intend to do that now, coming up this fiscal year, starting October 1, and that will mainly be focused on other infrastructure that we're going to need at the JM property, probably a larger waterline to support that plan that we have there. So, if we do that, it's a million and a half matching grant, so the total cost to us would be three, but we're going to get a million and five from EDA if we win that grant. John Mansfield demolition, we've got $850,000 left, that's 250,000 from last year's budget that we didn't spend, so it's really, it's a net 500,000 that we need to finish the project, so that's in there. Facade reclamation incentive, that's an incentive that we had for Mr. X's building that had a metal facade on it, and they were just too nervous to take that off, because they didn't know what was behind it. So, DDA approved this a few years ago, so it was no cost to you to take that off and put it in the dry. Again, we've done all that, so we're going to eliminate that program. Marketing, this is a standard marketing budget that we've always had, nothing different, special, I think we had 250,000 in there last year, but typically we spend less than 100,000. So, we just picked the items that we typically participate in and just put it in at 143. So, with all of that, when it's all said and done, we should have about 3.5 million left over for any projects, 3.36 million left over in the bank to continue our work. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I'll just make one comment, we thank you for your vision on downtown. You were one of the area adopters to get our slipcovers off, and I think we can all see the fruit that it has borne, and I think it was a big part of getting our great American Main Street aboard, and we thank you for your group and all of those who helped, and Donna and all, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
The other thing I was wondering about, when do you think your building, your new building, not new, your new older building, was constructed, would you think, in the mid-'60s?
Probably.
I don't know. You may spend more than 8,000, we hope you don't.
Hopefully, hopefully not, but just in case, we don't have to come back and bother you with.
I think Josh had a question.
Josh?
Hey, Tony, having, I appreciate the facade grant program more than I can say, having taken advantage of it twice, having seen the way it was rolled into the facade and rear alley entry alternatives, and helping two other property owners do it as well, so thank you and I applaud you for that vision. Do you have a sense for what the breakdown of capital on the private sector side relative to what the economic development input was? What was the, what was the city's net return on investment for putting in that seed money that you guys so wisely thought about 70 years ago?
I don't have that. I do know, for example, on 34 Chop House, that was a multimillion dollar project, so there, yours was a million dollar project. We haven't taken every one of those 94 contracts and then, and pulled out the numbers that people invested, but it was several million, we're pretty happy about that.
I mean, I know I was about a six to one on cost versus grant, and I was very thankful for the grants, so, again, I appreciate and applaud your wisdom on how to deploy capital in our city to help revitalize the heart of it. The second thing I would say is, I think 3.4 million should be enough to augment your staff with some recently available seasoned economic development folks in the local area. I would love to see more power in your, in your department to continue the vision that you guys have. What brought me to Dennison, ultimately, economic development really was a cornerstone of our platform in choosing Dennison, so thank you, and I certainly hope you guys are able to continue doing it.
Thank you, Josh. Anything else?
We do appreciate your efforts, you're out there hustling for our community every day for new construction and new sales tax avenues, and we appreciate it very much.
Well, you've appointed a great board of volunteers, and we have superior staff, and it's an honor to work and serve this council and this city, and we're going to keep doing it, and we got a lot more work to do.
Yes, we do, we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kye? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. And now, Ms. Alcibal, I'm going to welcome you right back up front. Sorry for getting us all out of line, so let's go to, oh, sorry, is there a motion to approve the DDA budget?
I make a motion to approve the Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year 2026 budget as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Redwine, a second by Councilman Courtwright. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Seven, eight.
I should have went before Tony, because he set the presentation bar really high, so, but neither of us can compete with a silo presentation, so.
All right, you have props.
I just want to state that tonight's presentation is similar to the last update that you had on August the 15th at the Budget Workshop. So, for the general fund, days of reserve slide, you will see that it's updated with more detail regarding the transfers, so there's more detail there, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Keep in mind that the figures on these slides that I present at every budget update will change slightly from meeting to meeting, and there's a lot of activity going on, a lot of things moving around, and there won't ever be any major changes, but you will see some small differences from meeting to meeting. So, there, these are the same figures presented on August the 15th with only one change, I did remove the enterprise rental car program expense, as I mentioned previously, it has offsetting revenue, the auction proceeds, so I really shouldn't have considered that an increase in our expenditures. The TASWS fund, this is what we previously presented, general fund, it's basically general fund revenue that we set aside so that we can track expenditures. If you recall, we have equipment financing, and COLAs currently placed in this fund. So, there's no changes to this slide, TERS 3 and 4 will support our library needs, a street sweeping machine, Munson Park road repairs, and Waterloo Lake erosion repairs. So, here we have what a property tax increase from 1 to 6 cents would look like, and what the additional revenue could be used for. As you can see, our top priority is additional funding for street maintenance, and there are two maps, two maps in the room, a heat map and a maintenance map that I believe Ronnie Bates is going to come and speak about. And these are, I believe, work that has been done this current year.
Evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
On the right here is the heat map. I'm sure you understand the concept of the heat maps, and the more the color is, that means the more of the work that's been done. That is. Of a total of 611 city work order system, and we have a work order system for every project we do. That's what these black dots represent, is the actual work order number that is associated with the call or something. As you can see, it's kind of been mixed all over town. That's far right there is Morton Street, which is about right, because that's where those main breaks break all the time, in that narrow section there of the Techs dot right of. So, that's, that's kind of the work that's been done this past year, or this current year that we're in right now. This map over here represents the streets that we overlaid in 2004 with the red color, and then the streets that we're, we actually are starting on tomorrow with the overlay current 2005. And as you can see, we've kind of picked up, we did this much last year, and then we're picking up the rest of the way, and we've done that on several of the projects. The color that's purple is showing the road street projects that we did that were complete rehabs. As you know, the Boy Lake with the roundabout is showing here, we've got several other locations here that we have done as well that were complete rehabs. Any questions?
Councilman Massey, we'll take snapshots of these visual aids and send them to you shortly.
Thank you. Ronnie, I do have one concern, I think you and I have talked about it on a few occasions, most of the calls that I get are, you know, street-related, and I, I am aware that we have that one moving, that pothole we move every evening, we perhaps should move it a little bit differently in this coming future year, but is there, I'd like to see some way that we can, if we're going to talk to our citizens about altering their tax obligations, let's make sure that they can see the value of that, and street seems to be the lowest hanging fruit, so I'd like to find a way to turn the narrative around from a complaint from our citizens for failure to maintain, which has a lot of antecedents to it, you know, even before your arrival, and make it a celebration of progress being made, and so I'd love to see how we, as a city, and as a staff, and as elected positions, can forward that message that says, yes, there are issues, here's our progress, here's how we're marching through that, and so I appreciate the maps that you've done, I'd like to continue down that vein, so that the calls I get are more, tell Ronnie he's doing a great job, and not, why is my pothole not getting fixed?
Thank you, sir. I think what we could do is also put these on the webpage with a link to it, so that they can, on the heat map, every time we do a, get a work order or a request, it'll update it and keep it updated as we go. That might be one way we can do that, so, but I appreciate what you've said.
All right, any other questions or comments for Mr. Bates? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
On this slide, if you recall, one penny will generate approximately 261,000 in additional property tax revenue, and nearly 27% of our residents will be exempt, or not affected by this tax increase due to exemptions already in place. So, here you have the annual and monthly impact of a tax increase on homeowners. At the top, you have the tax increase amount and the new tax rate. Below that, you have the average taxable value per, or certified totals, and then total average property tax amount for the property, and then the increase over the prior rate, which is broken out by the year and month.
Could we please go back two slides?
Yes. I think it interferes with.
All right, on this, this is a good one, right here. So, if the council so chooses, if there were an increase in the tax rate, just because it's under the four cent category, or the five cent category, or the six cent category, does not mean that's exactly how we would have to spend the money. I think it would be up to the council to provide priorities to you.
Yes. Yes, I would appreciate and need direction from council on the priorities. This is just an example to kind of give you a. This is just an example to kind of give you a, a visual of what it could look like.
Thank you. Proceed.
These are some of our additional general fund needs that you have seen before. These are needs that we have budgeted for or that we have not been able to make happen in this upcoming budget. Some of these budgets, such as auto maintenance and electricity, may have had some partial increases, but not enough funding that will carry us through the fiscal year 26 budget. And then sales taxes are second top revenue source. Here, we can see it plateauing the past two years. For fiscal year 26, we are looking at only a 2% increase over the current year. Our top revenue source, property tax, if you recall, our tax base growth is also plateauing. We're only showing a 1% increase in our tax base growth for the current year, which will be what supports our fiscal year 26 budget. Permits are down as well, which explains the slowing property tax base from the prior slide. These totals reflect residential dwellings such as single-family duplexes and townhomes. And now to our utility fund side, this has been updated with more detail regarding transfers. As the General Fund Days of Reserve slide was, the estimated days of reserve remains at 48 days. That's for fiscal year 26 projections. And then, the only change made to this top increase slide is also the removal of the Enterprise Car Rental Program, since there will be offsetting auction proceeds revenue for that. As you can see, the largest dollar increase is our debt payments. This coming year, it will increase by over, or nearly 1.7 million dollars. And then, the additional needs that we have in our utility fund are shown. And these also are needs that we have not been able to make happen in full. We may have given some partial budget increases to these, but not enough for what is going to be required to get us through the year. And that is all I have, and I am welcome, or happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on Ms. Osobah's updates? Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Osobah. Now, let's go back to 6A, receive report, hold discussion, and take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing to consider any tax increase revenue.
Okay, this evening, we will, council will need to determine what our proposed tax rate is and to approve a resolution to call a public hearing on an increase in tax revenue. Now, that does not mean necessarily an increase in the tax rate, but every year, as values go up, as it increases property tax revenue, we're required to hold a public hearing for that. And the public hearing will be held on September the 15th at 300 West Main at 6 o'clock. And the adoption of the tax rate is also set to be at that same meeting. The budget that was just presented tonight is based on our current tax rate of .712034 per hundred dollar valuation. And as you saw, this rate does not fully support the rising costs that we're experiencing, nor does it support the additional needs that we are facing. And so, staff is seeking direction from council on the proposed tax rate. And again, we'll need to approve the resolution to call a public hearing on the increase to our tax revenue.
Okay. Questions, anyone? Okay. What Ms. Osobah was talking about on the increase in values, in 2024, we had about 2.6 million dollars in increased revenues from either new homes or increase in appraised value. And for 2025, we're dropping down a little bit, even though we still have the, the amounts from '24 and '23. We'll, this year, we'll slow, that growth slows to about 1.3 million dollars over receipts last year at the same tax rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Discussion...
Mayor Crowley?
Yes, sir.
So, if, if, if there's no other questions for her, I'd like to make a point, if that's all right?
Please, go ahead, sir.
So, we, it was a year ago tomorrow that we had the unenviable task of having this discussion the first time. And looking back at the minutes from that, I, I recognize that what we said then is still true now, and that is, we are a unique city in Dennison, in Texas, where we have gone through the doldrums of financial failure in the absence of a major employer. And as such, in order to not penalize the few citizens who we maintained through that period, we deferred maintenance. And now, we have obligations for current maintenance as things wear out, depreciate in their quality, and we have a, a future that we have to look forward to. So, I, I don't know that I can improve upon Admiral Wret's point that we have obligations for past, present, and preparation, but we are still in that same spot. And I wanted to confirm my statement last year to make sure that I didn't confuse it. I expect that we are one year through of a three-year process where we are going to financially underperform relative to those three obligations that we have to our citizenry, both past, present, and future. So, I expect that we can survive with a very lean budget, the same type of thing that we can impose on European nations who have, who struggle financially. But I think our future's brighter than theirs. We've got known quantities under contract that we are spending 100 million dollars to facilitate their development that will triple the ad valorem values, if the projections are correct, over the next decade, and that's just on a, a few developments in place. So, the future for Dennison is one that doesn't mirror any other cities that we've, that we can compare to. Frisco didn't have the infrastructure that then dilapidated and had to be returned, even though we are experiencing or likely to experience an accelerated growth rate similar to what Frisco had. And when I lived there, 20,000 people, it was a great city like Dennison. And now that it's got a quarter million people, I don't want anything to do with it. I don't know that we are on track to ever become that city, thank God, but I think that we are on track to have our own financial challenges. I am thankful for the leadership of men like Tony Guy and yourself in council, both past and present. But the painful truth is that we don't have the revenue coming in this year to support all of the obligations that we have. So, either we've got to change the rate as predicted last year with the hope that it will, in a very short period of time, be something that we can reduce, or we get to push down the road other obligations that we have today and become part of the chain of events that led to a future council having to support not only those past obligations for deferred maintenance, but their current in a much larger footprint city and project for future growth once we start getting out of this plateau.
Thank you very much, Councilor Massey. Other comments, questions?
At this point, is it too late to do, and I know this is a wild thought, I just want to throw this out there, a voter approval rate? If we were to go to the citizens and say, hey, we're looking to fix every single street in town. We have this report that was given to us a few months ago, this IMF report that said we need 5.49 million to catch up with everything, all the backlog, and we need at least 2 million a year to, to pay for the concurrent improvements of our streets. Is it too late right now to call for, for a voter approval rate?
I believe we've passed the deadline for the voter approval rate.
That's what I thought.
In response to that, I think an appropriate thing might be to get a subcommittee of the council together and maybe a few other members and discuss that and know, understand what our timelines are if, if the council so chose to move forward with, with a large bond. It would take a large bond election.
Of course, and I think that's something, you know, maybe in the May election to look at, to consider, to take it in front of our, our citizens and say, hey, this is one of the biggest complaints. Leave it in the citizens' hands if this is something they want to do, something that we can put on, you know, for the citizens of Dennison. And either they can say they want it or they don't, so.
I believe the reason we didn't consider it this year is because we can go up to a 26%, or 26 cent increase before we hit that voter, voter approval rate. So, it was quite far up there, so.
And I think the, I guess my, my mentality on it is one of those things that I would not want to jump that high without giving it to the citizens.
Right, correct.
Considering we're already, you know, in one of the highest in, in our population bracket where we are currently. And so, you know, I know this is the biggest complaint, and to me, it's like, if we really want it done, I let the citizens make it happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good comments, thank you. Any other questions or comments? One of my comments would be that the growth coming from our south geographically hits southern Grayson County first. And we've seen a massive amount of growth in the Van Alstine area, Sherman area, and regretfully, we're the, further to the north, so we don't have new tax revenues coming in from those projects. However, I honestly believe we will. We just don't, you know, we're just not quite as fortunate as southern Grayson County and Sherman and Van Alstine at the moment. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. So, at this time, we need to take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing to consider an increase in the tax rate if the council so chooses. And you're back.
Yes, we'll know, council will need to decide on that, what that proposed tax rate will be for that approval of that resolution.
And we can propose a resolution for the tax rate, but as we did last year, we proposed one rate, ended up lowering that. We have a final vote that will come at the next meeting. So, is there a motion for the resolution calling for an increase in tax revenue?
Mayor, just to make sure I understand your question, we are looking to set a high watermark from which we can retreat, but can go no further, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This would be the maximum, and then, as we still continue to work diligently on the budgets the next couple of weeks, we can make, we can come off of that. We can't go above what we decide this evening, but we can retreat, as you said.
And that number is a percentage or a dollar figure relative to existing?
It would be, it would be in pennies. It would be one cent, two cent, three cent, four cent, et cetera.
Yep. Understood. I would, I would put for discussion a match of what we did last year as the high watermark. Not with a support of that number, but with a baseline or a line in the sand that doesn't exceed what we did last year.
All right, and so, is that a motion?
Negative, sir, that's a request or a, an offer for discussion.
Is that a percentage or cent wise on that, Josh? So?
Cent wise, so no higher than what we did last year, opportunity for lower.
So...
I think we did six cents last year.
We did six cents, okay. I was just trying to make sure you weren't saying, because I know last year when we had the proposed rate, and we came back with the actual rate, we, we proposed 10 cents initially. So, you're proposing that six cents, I guess, is that kind of what you're looking at?
That, that, yes, sir, I, I feel like I can justify that to the citizenry that we are now moving towards a certain austerity in our spending. I have full faith and confidence that our staff has, uh, they are honest in their fiduciary responsibilities, so it's not like the other cities I've lived through that were full of thieves. But I want to make sure that we can justify accurately to our citizenry that we are making progress, so I'd say six cents.
All right. Other comments, questions? So, is there a motion to go with a tax increase of six cents?
I, um, just want to throw this out there.
Okay.
Currently, the items in the budget, a lot of the things that, as far as COLA and other adjustments, yeah, I know we, we dipped slightly in our Days of Reserve, but, you know, there's, most of the items, can we, Chris, can you go back to the slide that just showed the, the suggested? Yeah, the suggested items to be added. You know, when we look, yeah, that one right there. And so, when we look at, you know, six cents, which raises another 1.5 mil, I, I know we're not necessarily going with six cents as the actual rate. I, I would probably, and this is just me, and I, I think if, if we do like a three cents and say, hey, we're potentially going up three cents, it'll just give us an opportunity to, for one, not have this, this scare of, man, we're going to do this again, this six cents. But, you know, two, can justify, hey, you know, we're, we're going to add, you know, even if we use that whole 791 mil, 791,000 for streets, you just be able to sell it a little bit better, and we can kind of just discuss it and finalize, you know, what we're going to be. You know, I just want to propose three cents on the proposed rate instead of six cents.
Okay. Other comments or thoughts? Preferences?
Yeah, I, I do worry. I see John, Josh's point for the six cents, and I see your point. I, I don't necessarily think we need to go up to six cents. I don't want to, because it's kind of a maximum thing, we can always go down from that. I, I do, after more looking into it, I don't want to handcuff us by dropping it as low as three cents. That would be my concern. We can always do, decide on three cents, right? If we, if we do six cents today, but if we choose three cents, you know, that's all we can do, you know?
Right.
So, that would be, that would be my only concern with going three cents.
Well, we, we have talk of six and talk of three. I make a motion to cap our potential tax increase at five cents.
I can second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to cap an increase at five cents. And realizing we still have a couple of weeks to do diligence, however, this gives our city staff a feel for where the council, the council is standing at the moment.
Mayor, just to clarify, that motion includes adoption of the resolution?
With adoption of the resolution to be included, am I? Please.
A motion to include the adoption of a resolution to use no more than a five cent increase for the coming fiscal year. There was a motion by Mr. Redwine, the second by Councilman Massey.
I believe it requires a roll call vote.
It does for the final vote. You need a roll call vote.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll for a vote.
Sure, as I say your name, if you'd please say yes or no. Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Courtwright.
Yes.
Mayor Crowley.
Yes.
Councilmember Redwine.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Massey.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Thorne is absent. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you, Ms. Osobah, for your presentations. There is no need for a, an executive session this evening, so time is 7:29, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you for all of our staff. Thank you, department heads, we appreciate it. Thank you.